Good morning, everyone. Today is July 24, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Taos County Board of Commissioners. Welcome, everyone that's here with us today. I hereby call this meeting to order. Court Call and Roll.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Present.
Vice Chair Gago.
Present.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Chairman Corbald. Present.
Okay, if everyone would please stand. Commissioner O'Donnell will introduce the person that has been in our explorational position at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Today, I'd like to present Pastor Stephen Daniels. He is from the Emmanuel First Presbyterian Church in Penasco.
This morning, we'll be hearing from Celtic Spirituality, Sounds of the Eternal. It's based on Psalm 85, verse 8. "I will listen what God, the Lord, says. He promises peace to his people, his faithful servants, but let them not turn to folly." In the silence of the morning, I am alive to the new day's light, alert to the early stirrings of the wind and the sounds of the creatures. In the silence of my heart, I hear the yearnings that are in me and the fears and the hopes that rise from within and the doubts that trouble my soul. In the beginnings of this day, oh God, before the night's stillness is lost to the day's busyness, open to me the treasure of your inner being, that in the midst of this day's busyness, I may draw on wisdom. Assure me again of my origins in you. Assure me again that my true depths are of you. The truth has been inscribed into my heart and into the heart of every human being, there to be read and referenced, thanks to you, oh God, that there are ways of seeing and sensitivities of knowing hidden deep in my soul, waiting to be discovered, ready to set free. Open my senses to wisdom's interpromptings, that I may get voiced where I hear my soul and be changed for the healing of the world, that I may listen for truth in every living soul and be changed for the well-being of the world. Let us pray. God of creation, like an infant's open-eyed wander and the insights of a wise grandmother, like a young man's vision for justice and the vitality that shines in a girl's face, like tears that flow in a friend bereaved and laughter in a lover's eyes. You have given me ways of seeing, oh God. You have endowed me with sight like your own. Let these be alive in me this day. Let these be alive in me. Amen.
Thank you. Sheriff Corbald, would you please leave some of the flag?
My honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next item on the agenda, Commissioners, with approval of the agenda. Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second. Court Call and Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Okay, next item is citizens' concerns. We ask any citizen that wishes to address the commission to come forward, state your name as you reach the podium, and we ask that you limit your time to five minutes or less in accordance with our open meeting back resolution. If anyone wishes to address the commission at this time, ask them to come forward.
My name is Ariel Greeley, and I spoke to Ariel yesterday, and also Tom Langenmore. And what I took for place is to start flea market in the starting modified year. And I've done a lot of research and was once the manager of Taos Trade Base that was operating across from Walgreens a few years ago, working with Kent Lewis. And I have a proposal, and when it's appropriate, I can distribute this back to all of you. Part of what I'd like to do is, well, I would charge money to every vendor and also donate 10% of each one of the vendor fees to the C A P. I'd also like to offer C A P a booth of their own, free of no charge, so that they can solicit their mission. And also for stray hearts, so that they can offer, if they choose, a free booth to offer animals up for adoption each week. That would be, my main objective is to allow this town to create and support the economy, give people a chance to sell their goods in an orderly fashion that's controlled and well-managed, and create that opportunity for the town, but also roll back to the town so that everyone can succeed and benefit from it. And I'm prepared, as long as I get this done, I'm prepared to go ahead and begin.
Mr. Chairman, Ariel, I spoke to her for a while yesterday by phone. I had mentioned, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. She had spoken to Commissioner Langenmore as well sometime last week. Mr. Chairman, I mentioned to her that probably the best thing that she could do to present her entire idea is to bring it forward to our county managers beyond the board of companies here and our assistant county managers for an appeal and have those review your package and then come forward and issue you with ideas on how we can proceed with anything with your ideas.
Thank you. So when it's appropriate, I can give out my information. I also have letters of support, six different letters that have been personally to me from John Greeley at P L M, who's been supporting my idea, has written a letter of support. Judge Ernie Ortega has expressed favor for this court. The package should be able to explain everything. I've written a full business proposal, breaking down what the objective is, how much money would get charged, where the money would be distributed, all being completely transparent and functional, making myself accountable from start to finish. So if anyone has any questions, I'd have to answer them.
All right, we'll forward that to the manager, and he will start the review process of your request, and then he'll be in touch.
Thank you, Ariel.
Thank you, Ariel.
Mr. Chairman, a little quick, in the past, Ariel and Mr. Corbald can share more of what we've had to do with regards to most flea market and also the last couple of years. There was an idea of bringing in the farmer's market to Taos County, to Taos County Park Lot. And so, Mr. Corbald has, you two have had a lot of experience in reviewing what kind of things to be done and if it's going to even be allowed at all.
Right. And I was once employed by the farmer's market two years ago, and I know that there were some complaints about parking, but just as water finds its level, people have seemed to have found solutions to that and worked around it, and they're still successfully selling their produce. If the flea market can function here and the farmer's market can carry on the status quo, then everybody can be happy because the farmer's market is already progressing just fine and seems to be to have solved any problems to a degree where everyone is still succeeding financially.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yeah, I will just quickly mention this idea has been, but before, just before we looked into it, we do need to make sure we maintain a certain level of parking spaces and that we have maybe fines, and we also have jail here, so we can make sure that there's no blocking of the traffic to the jail. This is also a designated emergency spot, so if there's ever a full-blown emergency in our county, this is the location in which we would set up a connected control center. So there's a lot of concerns here.
And security because we can service that comes to our system.
Right. And I bring close in the information the business plan, a site map, and where the established area would be, and there can easily be a cap set on the number of vendors, should that be a reasonable thing to do. Having it just in the front, not more, you know, the area that I'm thinking is right in front, 35 vendors, who matters, but I'm only anticipating 10 to 15 vendors with hours of operation from 2:00 to 1:00 p.m., everybody off the lot by 1:30. And...
You'll look at your proposal and then they'll get back with you on me. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
Hi. Hi. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm just here, while I'll be speaking on something else in a moment during a public hearing, but I do want to take the time to acknowledge and thank two of your county employees, Edward Martinez and Lorenzo Pizquitas, for their work in helping to lead the amigos bravos river cleanup this year, all the trash that we picked up, all the brush that we cleared. They're two of your best employees in the county, and I just want to extend my sincere appreciation to them. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Same now, we'll proceed. Thank you all again for being here, and thank you for your comments earlier and Councilman and O'Donnell. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Item A is approval of the July 10, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Second, Mr. Chairman. Motion and a second to approve the July 10 regular meeting minutes. Court Call and Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes, Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Item eight is a proclamation in memory of Joe Limo Martinez. If we could have the family come up here to the front, and I'll go to the podium and read the proclamation. It's tough that we honor your loved one in a way that he meant a lot to Taos County, and as we see, some of his members of the department that he retired from Taos County are here to honor him as well today, so that just shows you what your husband, your dad, your grandpa meant to everyone here. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Joe Limo Martinez was born and raised in Taos, New Mexico by his parents, Adelia Grant and Agataviano Tony Martinez, along with his siblings Samrah, Linda Grant, Salosa, Diarcheletus, Tomas, Arturo, Esther, Regina, Felix, and Libby, Petrujio's, Henry, Ramon, Francis, and James, he was raised in a humble rural tradition that values hard work, family, religion, and compassion. And whereas Joe Limo Martinez married Olivia Martinez on January 28, 1968, together they raised a son, Dominic Martinez, and daughter Catherine Martinez Molina, and was a proud grandfather of seven grandchildren, Nathaniel, Elizabeth, Francisco, Desiree, Mirabel, Ana He, okay, and Haley, and one great-grandson, Jeremiah. Whereas Joe Limo Martinez was an active member of the Army National Guard for 17 years and provided service and dedication to serve this country. And whereas Joe Limo Martinez was hired by the Taos County Sheriff's Department as a deputy sheriff from July 14, 1989, after four years on the job, he received a promotion to lieutenant, and then Lieutenant Martinez went above and beyond serving the citizens of Taos County, and he retired from the force on September 13, 1996. And whereas Joe Limo Martinez was an active member, hermano, of the nuestro padre Jesus Nazareno Morales de nuestra señora de la solidad en el Royceco, New Mexico, for 46 years, his dedication to his church and community in El Royceco will never be forgotten. And whereas we, the Taos County Board of Commissioners, honor the memory of Joe Limo Martinez for his service, courage, sacrifice, and dedication to his family and our community throughout his life. Now therefore, be it resolved on this 24th day of July, 2018, Taos County Board of Commissioners, by the authority vested in us by the people of Taos County, hereby acknowledge Joe Limo Martinez for his contributions to better Taos County and recognize July 20, 2018 as Joe Limo Martinez Day. It's with great honor, Representative. Commissioners, do you want to come down and get a picture with everyone? Please step forward a little bit. Why don't you do those? The road isn't clear today. That's why I'm on the table.
One, two.
Thank you all. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Commissioners, is the consent agenda, item nine. We're either consent agenda, and if there's any item you wish to discuss further, we will pull that, and it'll be the next order of business prior to the public hearings. Item A is approval of resolution number 2018-41, a resolution for the adoption of required community development, lot grant policies, and certifications. Item B is approval of resolution number 2018-42, a resolution authorizing requesting participation and funding in the New Mexico Department of Transportation fiscal year 2018-19, local government road fund program co-op funding cooperative agreement. Item C is approval of resolution number 2018-43, a resolution authorizing requesting participation and funding in the New Mexico Department of Transportation fiscal year 2018-19, local government road fund program co-op cap funding for cooperative agreement. Item D is approval of resolution number 2018-44, a resolution authorizing requesting participation and funding in the New Mexico Department of Transportation fiscal year 2018-19, local government fund, road fund program co-op funding cooperative agreement. Item E is approval of resolution 2018-45, a resolution supporting the creation of new bargaining unit, I P, identified as ASME Local 2911, which will include Taos County deputies. Item F is approval for purchase engineered fill from the Taos Ground Products for new senior center project for site preparation building pad in the amount of $59,000. Commissioners, you have heard the consent agenda as presented to you today. It was the pleasure of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set a motion to approve items A and B, and I would like for the public's benefit to listen to the resolution. Sorry, but it's such a small number. I hope it's good to be here immediately.
No, here's a second. Second. Any motion to approve items A and E of the consent agenda, rest of the items will be pulled by Commissioner O'Donnell for further discussion. Court Call and Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes, Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Item B, approval of resolution 2018-24, a resolution authorizing requesting participation and funding in the New Mexico DOT fiscal year 2018-19, local government road fund co-op funding cooperative agreement. Mr. Pacheco. Mr. Chairman, we're on the board. Just have questions.
Mr. Chairman, I guess what I would like to see is an explanation where the whole funding is coming from. You proposed...
Yes, I'm the chairman of the commission. The items B, C, and D are local road fund grant agreements. One is for the school bus route, the other one's for the cap funding, and the other one is for the special project funding. These three grants will go to Camino de Medio and Alfa Salzada Road. So this is a part of our contribution to preparing Camino de Medio, and this is almost including our match, approximately $699,000 in total. And for these three grants, the finance department has set aside the match monies for each one of these, and we want to put the money towards that for our portion of Camino de Medio.
And so, Mr. Chairman, these are the ones that are just toward the county side of Camino de Medio, correct?
Yes.
And when will they be, when will these projects start?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, we are in conversation with the Public Works Director from Tana, Taos. We, Mr. Corbald, I was checking myself out with him three weeks ago. We're going to have another meeting. We're still trying to, our next meeting's going to be with engineers to talk about the rideaway takings, and so far, it's still a combined project, and we want to keep it underway for the takings, but that should be coming up anytime I have a meeting with engineer on the rideaway, which is Sotter Miller, Santa Fe, your ride engineer, and Alex Abengta is the sub who's going to do the rideaway negotiations. So that's the next step, and the county had set aside money for that as well. After we do the takings, then we can look at either keeping it as a combined project with the town or applying, for example, our $699,000 after the rideaway acquisition. So we do have an expiration date of these funds, December 31, 2018, so turn a little gear up for summer project for next year.
And Lisa, could you bring up item C, just for the dollar amount of money? And then...
And another thing to note is, this year, we've received probably, and this goes across statewide, we received approximately $425,000 more than prior years, so we saw that that amount of money was coming in, total $699,000 with the match, we thought let's put it towards Camino de Medio, since we are that ready to qualify for city adjacent, starting to acquire those funds for the road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do you have to vote on them separately? Are you satisfied on information for B, C, and D at this time?
I am, Mr. Chairman. Now, I'll set a motion to approve item B to start off with.
Okay.
Second.
Set a motion, second, to approve resolution 2018-42 as presented. Court Call and Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. Item C.
The same with item C. Mr. Chairman, approve of resolution number 2018-43.
Second. On the second, Court Call and Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell.
Yes. And item D.
Would approve, Mr. Chairman. Approve of resolution number 2018-44. Second.
Motion, second, Court Call and Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Yes. Now, if you could bring up item F, it's on the screen. Commissioner O'Donnell. The item F is approval of purchase engineered fill from Taos Ground Products for new senior center project site preparation for building pad in around $59,000. Mr. Langenmore is available for your question.
Mr. Chairman, on this particular item, just a little bit more information, I think more for the public that is here on camera, as to when construction is supposed to be completed, on this one, starting officially, and if it's going to be completed.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, the site preparation has commenced. Richard Sanchez, along with two employees, Rudy Pacheco and Richard here from Public Works Department, are doing the site work of, over here on quarter of Albright and Malalta Place Street. And so that started approximately about two weeks ago. The item before you is to purchase the engineered field from Northern Mountain Excavation, and we needed to build up the pad site at one end approximately seven feet, so we are, we pulled out seven feet of material on the west end, and it then tapers off to three feet on the east end, so it doesn't run like a slope. After we did the site, we did the samples from a western tip, so we hired, what's that? This P O, this contract is to get engineered fill in Northern Mountain, and also part of the gravel is put back in Park Lot Site, and it was trends origin that on the west end, we kind of progressed it at seven feet to the back of the source of the community, and we needed to go a minimum of four feet below the existing grade, and if that wasn't, if we didn't hit hard back with gravel, we had to go an additional two feet. So we are going to have about seven feet of fill on the west end and about four and a half feet of fill on the east end of the facility, is all the people who need to fill.
So, Mr. Chairman, have we had to do this in the past, buildings in the survey?
Yeah, I mean, we did that here, and we still have a few issues. What was done at the hospital back in the early days, they blended the existing slope, which is the same clay, sandy clay type, and had that set up oxygen back with the oxygen area and cafeteria setting, and so it's just not a good slope. Another thing I need to mention is, the facility mill did come three, four months ago, it was approved, entered into a contract, that was without site prep, because that was additional fees, so the county's picking up that cost versus, we could have had a contract that would sort of add additional cost to the project.
So, Mr. Chairman, that was my clarification. It's not coming down to the bond money, it's coming down to our plan? It's not coming down to the bond money, it's coming down to our plan?
The fifty-nine thousand that you're going to approve is coming out of reserves that the county has, and then the salaries for Mr. Sanchez and, uh, the public works employees are right now coming out of their respective funds. So fifty-nine thousand's could come out of the reserves. Then we, uh, the finance department moved a couple of months ago to cover some of these costs and the additional cost to the building.
So are we anticipating additional money coming out of the reserves for this facility?
No, not at this point. We, uh, yes, Martinez did set aside enough money to cover the costs.
And so what I hear you saying is bond money did not cover this type of excavation?
It went up, but we didn't have enough money in the bond, uh, to cover it. This, when we gave in two thousand, uh, fifteen, uh, Mr. Trujillo submitted the paperwork to the state, it got on to the two thousand and sixteen November ballot, and was voted on statewide, but the prices have lined up since two thousand and fifteen, when Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Trujillo worked on submitting the proposal to the state, those prices have gone, uh...
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Another thing I didn't answer, Commissioner Romero's question, we're still, uh, maybe you could give it more of a, I was going to say that end date should be February of nineteen, let me see, we don't have that still out here?
Yeah, ten, we have ten days scheduled right now for mid-January, actually, mid-to-late January of twenty nineteen, and, uh, as long as we meet our schedule, don't slow down, and it looks like we'll be okay, we should be able to meet the August fifty-second date for us to be complete with the building pad, and still not parking lot stuff, but the utilities going through the parking lots and parking lots, and there's only so much we can do just to keep crowd, dirt going out onto our street. The building pad will be ready for that to start under start date. So, Mr. Chairman, one more question. So every time that we build anything in this area, more than likely, we'll have to do the same type of, uh, rig description.
Probably, that's why you do soils testing and know more, and it work from five feet to twenty-five feet depending on the types of soil, and that way you get a report so that the engineers can tell you, in this particular site, the clay's only a foot, foot and a half, so we take a foot, foot and a half on. And this side, it's real sandy, so you can use sand, but add a little bit of, uh, clay to it to make it bite a little bit. So, um, like our fleet building, the operations building that we're looking at, landfill wood, that's what a lot there is, a lot more of a gravelly, sandy mix, we probably won't have to overestimate this deep. Uh, here, we went down anywhere from seven to eleven feet, uh, for this building. Uh, so it just, it just varies our sort of really change. You go to Hoca Inta, I've done work in Hoca Inta, and it's sand from six inches down, and so you got, you have to compact it and put a little bit of gravel, which you have to drainage, you don't have the issue with heating because the drains well, so it just kind of depends, you have to, that's why you have to do soils report on, on each project. San Cristobal, we took down about two feet, all the top soil, about two feet more to get down to the, uh, gravel.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more question. So the building itself, you locked in the price of steel, you locked in all the building material costs, so we will not, we will not bring back to us any additional changes?
As long as we don't change anything, uh, I believe the contract's already set, and good to know, we've done all the submissions for heating, chemical, doors, door hardware, I've done all those reviews, all those that signed up on me, so there should not be any more price change. The building, building that was actually in the twentieth, alive, so that's why we have to hit our deadlines.
Thank you.
Thank you. These are all real estate project, okay?
Yes, your honor, Mr. Chairman, you've done a good job. With approval of, uh, for purchase of engineered fill from Taos Ground Products for the new senior citizen center project.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to approve item F, the, uh, engineered fill from Taos Ground Products for senior center. Clerk Calvo.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Vice Chair Gago.
Yes, Chairman Feller. Yes. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Commissioner, for the discussion. Okay, commissioners, um, we're now moving into the public hearing phase of this. Item C does not have a specified time, it was, um, just within the agenda as posted, so we can go to that. The other two, A and B, um, were scheduled for ten AM public hearing, and we will not commence with those two items till ten AM, uh, for, just in case there's someone from the public that is on their way and stuff, so we could, with the change in the agenda of the motion, we could, uh, handle item ten C at this time. So, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion, and a second, to take item C out of order of item ten public hearings. Clerk Calvo.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Yes. Vice Chair Gago.
Yes. Okay, item C, under public hearings, uh, this is discussion consideration and decision regarding the approval of wholesale liquor license application number one zero eight nine nine four one located at two forty-three A, Toon Drive, El Prado de Mexico, seven five two nine. The license is being requested by applicant Martha Aguilah, doing business as PM Wines. Mr. Vigo will present on behalf of the county, and then after his initial presentation, then I will open up a public hearing, and anyone wishing to speak during the public hearing must be sworn in by our foot. Mr. Vigo.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Mr. Calvo, members of the public. Uh, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, for the record, the applicant Martha Aguilah and Paul Greenholt are presently in attendance today. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the application before you today is for the wholesale wine beer spirits liquor license for PM Wines, which is located two forty-three A, Toon Drive, near the community of Prado de Mexico, within subsequent to the Stagecoach Neighborhood Association Amendment. On March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, I, Edward Vigo, Taos County Finance Director, approved the home occupation application in Martha Aguilah, owner of doing business as a wine, uh, PM Wines, to conduct a wholesale wine beer spirits cottage industry home occupation on sixteen percent or two hundred and thirty-one square feet of the one thousand four hundred and forty-six square foot residential structure. There will be no retail sales, strictly wholesale sales or retail establishments and restaurants, place orders online, by phone, or in person, and all orders will be delivered by the wholesaler directly through account purchaser. There will be inventory stored inside in the two hundred and thirty-one square foot office space, where the inventory will consist of cases of wine, beer, spirits, which by the nature of the inventory being indoors, the inventory will be screened from the view of the adjacent properties, and where the inventory will be stored and invented, that does not create a threat to health, safety, public welfare, or a nuisance. There will be no deliveries nor pickups by tractor-tractors to the home occupation business located at two forty-three A, Toon Drive. All deliveries to PM Wines will be sent by freight shipping to San San Francisco, where PM Wines will in turn pick up the inventory. There will be no equipment or process that you use that impacts the existing uses and properties in the neighborhood. Amongst the permitted principal uses within the Stagecoach Neighborhoods, zone number three is a cottage industry, or, in other words, a home occupation, provided that all home occupation standards of the home occupation are met, which in this case, the home occupation standards were met as referred to on my March fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen statement of zone certification. Also, the president of Stagecoach Neighborhood Association in a letter dated February twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen vote, I have met with the applicants and discussed the request. We have reviewed the sites of zoning and associated standards for cottage industry actual home occupation as specified in the Taos County Land Use Regulations. I am confident that the applicant's request at use is in conformance with both the neighborhood zoning and the Taos County Land Use Regulations. John Durham, president of the Neighborhood Association, Stagecoach Neighborhood Association. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, my question today is whether or not to approve the wholesale wine beer spirits liquor license application for Martha Aguilah, owner of PM Wines, and not approval of the home occupation. The home occupation has already been approved by me dating back to March of two thousand and fifteen. Once again, the item forty is whether or not to approve the wholesale wine beer spirits liquor license. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, last standing questions, if you have it.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner O'Donnell, should we delay any one point in the future, here or part of the future, can this turn into a full-fledged, um, serving property for, just wholesale?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, it will be strictly wholesale. There will be a long, lengthy process, and there's not the intent for this individual to turn this into a retail sales facility. The property is a residential structure, this is secondary to the use of the structure for residential purposes. If the individual chooses to change their use, they will come back to the planning department for either a special request or a total change. In addition, they will also need to go back to all the public to change the application.
Okay, at this time, I might open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak for or against this, please come forward and be sworn by the clerk.
I, I again.
You swear in firm under open penalty of perjury, but the test is going to be about to do this for a question.
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Darian Fernandez. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, I have the pleasure of having Martha Aguilah as one of my employees at the restaurant, Taos Ale House. I am, uh, the general manager of that property and also the resident agent for the company. We have a restaurant here in Taos, we also have a restaurant in Santa Fe, and our own in Alhamburki. In my experience working with Ms. Aguilah, she has, uh, gone above and beyond, uh, state requirements for responsible alcohol service, and we've never had an issue with her with, uh, her dealing with any alcohol or any, uh, patrons. So, you know, I ask that you approve this cottage industry today, um, so that I can start buying some more wine from her. Thank you very much.
For, for sale or consumption, please.
Okay, and, and, Mr. Chairman, maybe, uh, yeah, look, you can tell us a little bit about the block.
Um, I, yeah, I'm going to be sworn by the...
Mr. Reddick. You swear in firm under open penalty of perjury, but the test is going to be about to do this for a question.
Yes.
It's David Reddick, Martha Aguilah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, good morning. Chairman, and, and, as a question.
So if you just kind of want to give us a brief, as part of the public hearing, uh, it would be appropriate or have to do that after I close the public hearing, but if you just want to give a little bit of your business plan, is that what we're seeking?
Okay, um, uh, uh, depending on your approval, um, PM Wines will be a wholesale distribution company. I am looking to distribute natural wines, um, meaning organic, biodynamic, and also nothing that has been treated chemically and intravenously. Um, and if I do come across any beer, ciders, and, uh, any spirits that are, falls into that category, I would love to bring that into New Mexico as well. Uh, my whole focus is really to teach, uh, the Mexicans here in Taos and also potentially in Santa Fe and Albuquerque, depending on my, um, success here, on natural wines. And for me, I'm very passionate about that because I feel as someone that, uh, chooses to eat organically and healthy, that I should also be able to have an option in what I drink in an alcohol. And the natural wine movement in and of itself has been thriving on the East Coast for the past ten years. It's hit, uh, the West Coast seven to eight years ago, it hit Austin about two years ago, and Denver about approximately four years ago. I went to an all-natural wine festival this past April there. So we are literally on the cusp right now of it hitting New Mexico, and I would love to make Taos in particular epicenter of natural wine. Capture the tourism, capture the people that love food and wine, and make Taos a destination for that. So, um, that would be my number one goal, to help my community here, to help my, uh, fellow, um, restaurant community as well here with the guys, and bringing more people here. And my business plan also shows that I would love to have in the future a festival, there will be festivals that are called wine festivals, and I would love to make that happen here in Taos as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you could, uh...
I'm sorry.
If you could speak a little too about the economics of...
You mean how much money I'm bringing in?
Well, uh, in terms of adding to the boy people's...
Right now, I'm really looking at myself and potentially my husband and kind of just bringing it up. I'm not really looking at any employees at this time. Um, I also have my background as an event planning, and I've worked here in the community and in the hotel industry, so I have a lot of connections already as it is, so I really feel like I can handle this on my own, at least to start.
Thank you.
Another question? Uh, Mr. Chairman, I again.
Clerk Calvo.
Thank you. Um, what's your volume?
Right now, I'm only going to be ordering one pallet at a time, and I'm going to be, which consists of fifty-six cases only. So I'm only going to be focused on ordering one, selling it, and then moving to the next one. I'm not going to be buying in bulk. Normal wine that I will be selling will be industrial bulk wine. It is very small producers, uh, producers that their first and foremost agenda is to take care of the land first, so that the wine that is being grown and produced, um, you know, is a, is a symbolic of a time and a place.
So you won't be actually manufacturing with bats?
Absolutely not.
Okay, well, and what is your projected GRTs, the first year? Those receipts taxes, do you bring into the county? Or is this not subject to GRTs because it's wholesale? How does that work?
Mr. Vigo, I'll help you with that. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Calvo, it would be subject to, uh, GRT taxes. Ms. Aguilah has applied for and has obtained Taos County Business Registration, she is on file and registered under the county courts office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to address the commission regarding this, um, approval of the wholesale liquor license application one zero eight nine nine four one? Seeing no others, then I will close the public hearing at this time. Any other questions? More motion?
I, I just have a few, a couple quick questions, um, that, uh, we can get a map to kind of get an idea, how far into Toon Drive is this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Calvo, the residence is two forty-three, so it's about two and a half miles into Toon Drive.
And then, I see it was, they're renting? You own it?
I believe they did, they owned the property.
The application states that it is being leased. It was crossed out that it wasn't owned by the property in the application.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Calvo, all of us have a question.
Uh, the Apple Hall and Gaming Division, had we showed that I'm leasing the office space that I would be doing business in to myself, that I own the property?
Okay.
And the deed is in my name and in my husband's name, but because it wasn't just my name solely, they asked me to make like the office space lease agreement to show that I would be using that and leasing it to myself or my business.
Okay, and then, do you anticipate any problems with that road, or is some news article about...
Well, I'm not going to be getting any sort of deliveries, uh, by freight truck to the property itself. I will be picking it from a location where the freight will be delivering to, and I'll be just bringing my own car.
And how's that road, is that going to work for you?
Yes.
Um, Commissioner, uh...
Well...
This has to do with the license issue.
Well, our public hearing's okay.
I apologize, Commissioner, but we have to stay on point here.
It will work for me, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Calvo, I'll just confirm, um, standing statement, Ms. Aguilah, I am in possession of the warranty deed, uh, as reported for record in the office of county clerk in two thousand and seventeen, where Mr. Paul Greenholt and Ms. Martha Aguilah, the owners, have tracked for this such property.
Pleasure to the commission. License is requested by tenant Martha I Aguilada, doing business as Tino for Calvo.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Good luck.
We wish you the best. Commissioners, I obtain a motion for an eight-minute break.
Subtle, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Clerk Calvo.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell?
Yes. Good luck. We wish you the best. Commissioners, I obtain a motion for an eight-minute break.
Subtle, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Clerk Calvo.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell?
Yes. Thank you. All right, it is ten o'clock. Commissioners, I ask for a motion to come back into regular session.
Subtle, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion to second to come back into session. Clerk Calvo.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Chris Martinez, I said he was twice.
I'll say yes, but he's here twice.
Okay.
Right here. Hey, first public hearing will be discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash seven, which is an ordinance amending the delay to repeal of county regional transit grocery receipts tax and reauthorizing the tax. I will read ordinance two thousand eighteen dash seven, be ordained by the governing body of Taos County, New Mexico, in section six of ordinance number two thousand eight dash three, effective July first, two thousand nine, imposing a one-eighth of one percent, point one-two-five percent of county regional transit grocery receipts taxes hereby amended or replacing it entirely with the following new section. The new section six, delayed repeal optional. Ordinance number two thousand eight dash three is reauthorized at the current rate of one-eighth percent, point one-two-five percent in perpetuity if it becomes law. Effective date of this amendment shall be January first, two thousand nineteen, or July first, two thousand nineteen, whichever date occurs first after the expiration of the last three months from the date of this ordinance is delivered or mailed to tax and rep department. Commissioners, you have heard the ordinance, we've talked about this issue, this is the final step in allowing this repeal to occur. So if there's any presentation, Mr. Peter Dwyer of the NCRTD, he's a legal counsel, we also have Mr. Anthony Montalero, the CEO of NCRTD here. If there are no questions at this time, I'll open it up to the public for any comments from the public regarding the repeal of this ordinance. Please, so here we go. I will close the public hearing. Mr. Dwyer, is there anything you'd like to say briefly regarding...
Just thank you, I think we've been over this issue several times, and since there's really no public, so I have a comment, you're aware that we're just, it's not a new tax, all we're doing is taking the sunset away from an existing tax that bugged the buses.
Motion to approve ordinance number two eighteen dash seven. I'm sorry. Right? That's correct, right?
An ordinance amending the delay to repeal of county regional...
Yes.
Exactly. I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to second to approve ordinance two thousand eighteen dash seven, which amends the delayed repeal of the county regional grocery receipts tax. Clerk Calvo.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell?
Yes. Congrats. All the counties have done this now. We're close. We like you first. And some things, you know, I think there are other things. All right, so the second part of this is, item B is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the approval of ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash six, ordinance of the county regional transit grocery receipts tax reauthorization election.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. We actually, I'll hold the motion and second, because this is a public hearing. We'll ask if there's anyone that wishes to speak regarding ordinance two thousand eighteen dash six as presented in the agenda. During now, close the public hearing. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Second. Motion to second to approve Taos County ordinance two thousand eighteen dash six, the county regional transit grocery receipts tax reauthorization election process. Clerk Calvo.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
Yes.
Chairman O'Donnell?
Yes. Thanks, that's... Have a safe trip. Item eleven, here's our county manager's report on matters. Oh, Mr. Montalero.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to just...
Absolutely.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Taos County Commission for your consideration of these ordinances and working with us through this process to get this item on the November election. The other thing is, is that I'm going to be coming to you in a future meeting and bringing to you some information that you can use in educating your constituents regarding this tax, where the final stages of preparation of those educational materials, and we should have a short meeting. At some point, you may start getting questions from your constituency, and we'd like to have, make sure you have the information that you may need to respond in specific questions regarding the tax and the NCRTD and our one-plus operation, so just wanted to let you know that I'll come in in the future.
Vice Chair Gago?
Mr. O'Donnell? Sir, what are you going to do with the buses as you're changing them? Are they reusable? Can they be used or donated to some of the smaller school systems? Transportation for athletics and stuff like that organization? I just was wondering if there's any other uses that were supposed to be used as a transportation vehicle?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gales, once buses are declared surplus for disposal in Mexico DOT, through the EFE has approved their disposal, we then make those available to our members first of the district, and they're able to submit requests for those disposal buses. And then if none of our members make those requests, then they're made available to other nonprofit entities throughout the state here. And so school districts, nonprofit entities can make a request if those vehicles have not been disposed of. We also try to, we put them on through the disposal process through like Face, not Facebook, but...
eBay.
eBay, I'm sorry.
Okay, eBay.
And what have you, and at times as well, if there's been no takers there, then we pretty much donate them once we do the request, what have you. Some are in bad shape, and some you can keep them with deep for a while.
We actually have a list of them, a couple that are, I'm on the committee that makes them available to that, and so I'll keep an eye out for what you're thinking of.
I think Taos County, we've given several for the senior center program. There is, there's really no cost when we get to that point, other than you do have to change the color of the buses.
Even though you guys are blue and white, that's a different blue.
But we will let you know when we get to that point, because we've got about nine minutes left on that, part of the disposal list.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, through the election process, can the county commission get involved in the promotion of...
We can promote, we can answer questions.
Okay.
And I appreciate the fact that you're going to give us some answers and some ideas as to how much maybe use it sees on a daily basis. I know that it's been great service to the people of Taos County. It'd just be interesting to see what the numbers are.
They've provided you guys with their annual reports, their audits, and all of their promotional stuff, and the monthly newsletter that comes out. And so there's a lot of good stuff on that, and I can get more copies of those monthly newsletters.
As it changes, I'm sure.
And they're available online as well.
Yeah, and you're basically, I'm in the same position, I can't request people, although yes, I can just educate them on what the question is and specifics about what we do.
I haven't got the resources to say that.
That would be our responsibility. Okay, thank you so much.
And if there's a question that you don't have, Jim Nagle would be the person to probably contact there. I can give you guys his contact information, or Stacey Dwyer, she actually lives up here and travels daily. I'll get you that contact information, and Nagle can answer pretty much any question that Nagle wants to have.
Travels, did you on the bus?
No, she's in her little orange, what is that thing? Cube colored.
SUV, yeah.
Yeah. All right, thank you guys, good luck. Mr. Porto?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Got a few things this morning. First off, I would be asking the commission if we can hold a special meeting on the thirty-first of July, which is next Tuesday, so that we can pass our final budget and our fourth quarter required resolution for DFA. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get all of the final numbers from the treasurer's office in time for today's meeting, so it is going to necessitate a special meeting.
How many are proposing that?
Nine AM, if that works for everyone. It should be relatively quick in terms of what we have to approve, and then I would like to put in a couple executive sessions on some other items that are, have been requested, like the commission order to update you on things like union negotiations and our compensation spend. So I do participate, the meeting would be probably about as long as days we need next Tuesday.
I've got a clinic in Albuquerque that's mandatory as a coach for the high school act to attend Monday and Tuesday, but I can probably call in for the meeting part of it.
And the rest of the commissioners meet at nine AM on Tuesday.
I'll be here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
So at least we'll make arrangements for me to call in, then. I don't know if Tommy will be back, then he won't be able to...
His plan was to come back after the visit in Washington. He...
His father passed away, and that's why he's not here for this.
Yeah, so unfortunately, Commissioner Banking's father did pass away, he was out of East, he was able to spend a few days with him before his passing, and he decided to stay there until after our trip this Friday, then he'll come back. So I think he might be back by Tuesday, but I'll go check with him, spoke with him today. Okay, so we'll go ahead and schedule that, and like I said, that is mostly to pass the final budget, and it's the final day to do so, so we do need to get it on that day so that we pass our final budget and the fourth quarter, there's the issues required to get there. I also wanted to let the board know that our auditors are on site this week, they are here doing their preliminary work and getting started on the audit, and so Ms. Martinez and her staff are busy with them and keeping the deadlines moving along on our audit, so also wanted to let the board know that this last Friday, we did have a visit from local government DFA director Rick Lopez and a couple of his staff from CDBG, they did want to take a quick tour of the historic county courthouse in preparation for the application that was submitted on CDBG, and just to have a better awareness of the project. I was grateful that they took the time to stop by and visit, having the guests there right outside the door also maybe added to the romanticism of the project as a whole, and they understood the importance of getting people ADA access to the upstairs in your room, so I think it worked out pretty well. Until you see the building, it isn't always easy to understand the complexity of the project that we're putting forward. One thing I thought was very positive was that we had the thickest application, so we went ahead and put everything that we had available to us in the application, including the DOJ order, in order for them to understand the importance of it. So this is a great project, I think, even in the eyes of CDBG, so we still have one more step, which we present to the CDC council on September fifth, and so after that presentation on the fifth, I think a week later, they'll go ahead and announce the recipients of the CDBG, so we're very hopeful, and I would thank the chairman for popping in as well, kind of lopping around with them, and just to do our best to sell that project.
They told us ours was the most ask. We asked for the entire seven hundred and fifty thousand, and I felt we had the director's support together, because we're a little hard to read.
Well, the director is the chair of the CDC council, so it's good, we have this support, we think we're in the right direction. We've also been able to get a lot of support from all of our congressional delegation and all that kind of put in a good word on the project, so I think that's going to be helpful.
Mr. Chairman, could we, could you check one? Mr. Woods will be giving us kind of a final architectural plan, so we have that on hand when people are asking.
Okay, we're pretty much there, I think we put a pause on Mr. Woods until he gets to the CDBG process. He's here to assist us in our application, so we do have architectural design breaking down in the phases specific to the ADA part, which is very helpful as well with our application, so as the chairman mentioned, we have a full ask, but we supported our full ask, so they understand that we will definitely be able to spend the entire seven hundred and fifty specific to ADA.
Would this be face one, or would the roof and electric and H van be face one?
So the way we kind of arranged the faces for this ADA application was this would be face one, all the ADA, the face two would be the roof and those other things you mentioned. We would hope to be able to do a bid for both face one and face two, since we've been waiting so long.
We would actually together.
Yeah. We think we could get a lot of the inside work done over the winter, so the bathrooms, removals of the walls, those kinds of things, we can start working through the winter to get those done, and then obviously, probably wouldn't want to take the roof off until springtime, but those are the goals on that building, to spend all the money that we put aside, and I think roughly, we're looking at about one and one point three, one point five million in the first two phases that we put into that building, so.
And that would include the demolition on the west side to get into the, to work on the elevator?
Yes, so the west alley would be removed entirely and then rebuilt with the elevators in that west alley, every stairs and new ramp and all that.
Is the tenant aware of when we would have to vacate that?
We have not done that, cannot reach out to the tenant. We've done a preliminary outreach to let them know, but we will be, at some point, maybe them around. So we do have empty space up front, which we would hope they can take over that empty space, but we can move them out, and then the goal is to rebuild that front area where that retail establishment is, and then get back into that space at the end of the project.
And so if we get the CDBG, are we looking at October, November for demolition, or...
I believe that's a good rough estimate, we still would have to put it out to bid, so that's the next step after we go, we get CDBG, when we put it out to bid, I think it'd be a good idea to do a public meeting with the tenants and then the public to let them know where we're at, what our next step is, if you receive that.
So the demolition is not coming out of CDBG funds, or is it?
It would, yeah, I mean, that was a important factor in our application, in favor that demolition is a part of ADA compliance, we have to remove that area in order to put in the elevator and the stairs.
Thank you.
So the hearing is September fifth?
Yes.
And where is that?
It's in Albuquerque, and I'll put it forward, that information to the entire board, if I can leave it's at the Mary I Pyramid, but I'll go check that. They did move it, it was supposed to be the week ahead of time, but municipal was having their conference, so they chose to push it back a little bit, so. As I had mentioned briefly in the request for special meeting, our compensation study is pretty much complete, so I would like to present that to the board, if we can do that in executive session, present you an impact, and then to get approval to be able to implement that, that's something that we have budgeted for, and I think it is very attainable to go ahead and implement it, so I'm very excited to present that to the board hopefully next Tuesday, then we can move forward with that.
Is that implementation for this fiscal year, or...
Yes, yes, we'd like to do that as soon as possible. Roughly about forty-five out of fifty people that are identified to be adjusted are union eligible members, and so most of them are on the lower end, that we'll be bringing it up, so I think it's a very valuable implementation, and it helps the county get to a kind of uniform area, so from this point forward, our goal is to try to move everybody together instead of having the disparities that we created in the past, so. Very excited to keep moving on that. The next step with that will be the classification part of things, which we need to declassification, but we can do that after implementation of the suggested changes. And I also had a meeting last week with Facility Build in regards to the operations building out on Latifal Road, we're starting to get some preliminary numbers, kind of a sticker shot... Kind of a sticker shock, it certainly was. As Commissioner Bell mentioned earlier, the price of steel and certain other things have pushed prices up. So we were grateful to build a lock-in senior building, but it does look like it may affect the cost of any new construction. So at this time, the numbers are a little high, between the three and a half and four and a half million range. So we're looking to see where we can trim certain things and we look at all of our funding sources. But all in all, it is a very state-of-the-art building. It will create efficiencies for the county as a whole, and I think it's a great step forward still for the county. And of course, we do still need to get out of the Herd and Her property. So I think taking those preliminary numbers is a good step for us, but it does take us back to the drawing board on a few issues that we have to figure out how to cut the cost of it.
And Mr. Chairman, has the town of Taos given a date of when we need to be out of the Herd and property?
No, we have not gotten a solid date yet. As I understand, they still are going to focus on Mary Medina Building as the primary project, so that hasn't gotten started yet either. So I think we have a little more time than we originally had been told, but we're still moving along at our pace so that we can get it done. And that's about all I have today. I stopped for any questions. Anything else that the board might have for me?
How many of you guys are going to shop though?
There'll be the four commissioners. Commissioner Benkman will be joining us from East Coast, so he'll be joining us there as well, and myself. So I believe we're all leaving Thursday. None of us are going to be there in time for the NICO dinner that they're sponsoring, but there's another opportunity for a briefing in the morning before our tour. So it does look like quite a few New Mexico counties will be represented. By the end of it, there was quite a bit of a count, so I'm glad that we were able to.
Two hundred, right?
It seems like we're filling out the max amount because we're grateful we got in early, thankful that we had this opportunity and we're still finalizing our list of priorities to address the executive.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Item seven, as Commissioners report some matters in the U.S. business to be considered in a future commission week. Vice Chair Gago.
And then, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I'd ask that we direct Mr. Cordova to have a review with the legal counsel, the communesheet, and reach out to Rayo Zanaya for future EPA meeting agenda items and ask if we'd be able to start moving forward on that. About a small briefing in the last meeting, if we could start moving forward with some of these issues that are concerning. And I still want to find out if these contractors are putting their GRTs we're supposed to and finding any of those reasons to expedite that as well. The other thing that I would ask, and I don't know if we do this, whether Sheriff is here, one, I would ask that we consider a work study with all law enforcement agencies from the town of Taos, West Overland River, state and county law enforcement. Especially up in Northern Park, there's been a lot of activity and crime. I need to get some assistance with constituents and if we have to bring members in the court or DA's office, citizens, work study to figure out how we try to address some of these things. I just, I don't know if answers or any kind of reason that citizens and communities are getting these impacts on their properties and the nominees and we don't have, it seems like it's a revolving order. I think our law enforcement are doing their job, but I don't know if anybody else is doing their job. So if it's calling out to courts and calling out to DA's office, we have to, we have to get some kind of, so we got to find out over what our community suffering and there's no way we can try to promote our communities if we have all these vandalism and theft in small communities like Red River where four businesses are getting hit in the course of one month. And there's hardly anything we can do, I guess, as far as our law enforcement are trying to do, getting these days, putting people in and coming out the door just quickly. So I don't know how we can make that happen, but I'd ask that we consider a work study. Sheriff, would you be willing to participate in that kind of work study and get information with the Commission, to our town counselors, village counselors? You know, I think it's important for us to kind of know where we're standing with this because it's becoming worse and worse every day.
Those are the announcements I have.
Mr. Chairman.
Related to that?
Yes, related to that, again, I'm going to ask for that work study, if we have stats, so we know where are these burglaries occurring? How many? The former sheriff at least used to give us, you know, how many burglaries, how many civil processes. And I think it behooves us to see from both state police and sheriff and even the town so we kind of get a handle. You know, we've, yeah, we've heard there's not a drug problem amongst certain officials and we kind of need, I need the documents. I want to see how many responses to ODs, how many people who die from the drugs, how many burglaries, because right now I feel like we're in the dark. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner O'Malley. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Was wondering about the status of the Amalia Center, if that's complete where we are.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Malley, the Amalia Community Center is complete. We've had some correspondence with some of the citizens out there, trying to determine how they're going to organize with the next steps. And actually, I had a letter last Friday with a request to have a meeting with Commissioner Gago's to myself. So we're shooting by for the end of next week to go, or, yeah. First week of holding of August, we'll try and head up there to have a meeting with the community to see how we can open it up to the public. Right now, the fire department has moved in to their training area that was established somewhere in. The chief has a key to the building and so the fire department has been utilizing it for training and storage and things. They're going to be ready opening. Guess we would like to do a, 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 something like that. We would like to see.
The story's good about the 25 years, 40 years.
So maybe we could do something. Maybe we could.
Smart guys. For 24, I'll go with 200 burgers.
But Commissioner Bell doesn't even break your heart, and they have to be kosher all the way.
And our payments. The cell phone tower, the tower of the old guard, any work from Lino?
No, Mr. Daniel without communication for all last week and he'll be returning tomorrow. So I think it's hopeless to get back on that, bring that back and have something to present to the board in a future meeting.
And the Los Cordobes Bridge status?
Los Cordobes Bridge, we had a meeting last week with the engineer, trying to set up a meeting with the contractor. It's moving along, but there is some concern certainly that we're not right on track because we should be still trying to confirm where we already had in our schedule. But it is moving along, so it is getting closer to done and it is not being done. So we have been able to get close. I think if anything, we will be just a little bit over the schedule, but not by the bottom. So I'm just trying to confirm exactly what that, over to you might be starting to get out to the public about that.
And I believe that's the reason why I brought this up, Mr. Chairman, is I keep an eye on things that sometimes people think that I don't. And this is one of, hopefully the contractor does not come back wanting an extension of the time because I've been on this project and there is absolutely no work that can be worked on various times of the day. And it's very urgent that we get it done soon.
This steel structure was sent off and he had waited to get back for the next phase and because of some issues that this reporter could go over with you, it put him in a back place, but it was not his duty. It was something that was added on him by outside forces.
Okay. It's good to know these things so that it would.
Hostages. Yeah, because I called last, the other day because he, I was getting called.
I get called, so sometimes I can tell the whole story. So and then another road projects that you and I and our road superintendent went through about a month and a half ago, just kind of wondering the status on those as well. And then lastly, Mr. Chairman, I did attend the NICO conference. Thank you very much to the board for allowing me to do that. And I will have a complete report on the materials that I gathered from that conference in the next week. So if you could help me beyond joining the agenda, I would certainly appreciate it.
As I told you, during all of your term, you've been a pretty good ambassador for Taos County and I appreciate all of your stuff you've done with NICO and NMC, very strong, NMC. But thank you for that.
We changed names and, yeah, we did.
Brand. Anything else, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to, once again, revisit the detox building and perhaps a few of us as commissioners could be allowed to go present to the town council. I keep hearing neighbors there don't want it, but I don't know who they're talking about. Two, I know a couple neighbors, they don't, they would like to see something and I don't believe that should stop the process. Can we get the building? Can we not? Let's get a definitive answer. I know when we were curving the 911 tax, it was mentioned there was 800,000 that would be freed of, that could go into the general fund for behavioral health and, you know, I'm just really frustrated that we haven't been able to move forward with really making a dent in substance abuse treatment. So if.
There's light at the end of the tunnel on January 1st when somebody gets one.
So if we could work on that and see if we can, let's get a yes or no. And let's appear before the town council, so it's a vote before the town council. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm shy about coming to our team. Okay. Anything else? Item 13, motion by Vice Chair Gago.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I mean, so, thank you all. Thank you all.